Good evening and welcome to the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Select Board Meeting. This is Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa, and I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine. Oh, I'm sorry, he's on his way. Vinit Amavati.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
Okay. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda. The town's website identifying how the public may join gives you all the information you need. There's no chat or Q and A function. All materials from this meeting are available on the agenda posted at longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using this posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when I get to the comment section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. And please note that this meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording, please announce yourself now. No one here? And then, I don't know if online, I assumed that it would show if there was recording, and I don't see anything there. So, Mike has just stepped off a minute. So, let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start with announcements. To celebrate Long Meadows' Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, we would hope you would volunteer. This April sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and for information about volunteering for the town cleanup, you can get it at www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And hopefully, it'll be a nice day. The two thousand and twenty-four rain barrel program, we've discussed this a couple of times, Department of Public Works is partnering with the Great American Rain Barrel to host the two thousand and twenty-four program. Barrels are available for purchase by residents at discounted prices. The deadline to order is May fifth. For additional information on the program, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And those rain barrels would be for using water to water your garden, folks like that. The annual town report photo contest is seeking your photos. Every year, when we put out our annual report, we choose a photo, and we would like you to submit your original photo or drawing by March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four at noon. Submissions should highlight historical significant aspects of the town. This may be a building, event, location, et cetera. Creativity is encouraged, but the work must be original. For guidelines and information on how to submit your photo or drawing, please visit Citizen of the Year awards, the nomination forms are now available for the Citizen of the Year awards. Nominations are due no later than Friday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Citizens are encouraged to submit award nominations for citizen, community organizations, or groups who deserve recognition for performance of a service beyond what is normally expected in service to the town and the community. Nominees must be a resident of Long Meadow, current town, employees, or elected officials are not eligible. For additional information or to fill out the form, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And please don't hesitate to nominate someone. We've had years where we didn't have nominations, and we should have someone every year. Okay, the next is resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a resident comment, or anyone online?
No one on the Zoom.
Don't see any? Okay. Next is the interviews appointments. The board committee appointment, the tree committee, we met with Lou Cornet a couple weeks ago, and can we have a motion to have him fill the expiring term for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six?
Go ahead.
I moved, we're very excited about the tree committee. I have moved to appoint Lou Cornet to the tree committee to fill the vacant term, vacant three-year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right, all right. And now, we had another person who was interested in committee in session with Lynn. I asked about if we could have, appoint someone as a, just a non-voting member. Do we find out?
I still have to look into that. Some committees do have that ability, but this one might be different because it might be in the statute, or it might be in the bylaws. So, we'll just have to look into that a little bit further. But I did reach out to that individual, letting them know that there will be additional vacancies come June, in two months or three months, for annual vacancies.
So, yeah, sometimes, you know, there are vacancies that turn up, but there are committees that we do have individuals who are non-voting members, and they can get a feel for the committee, and we encourage that also. Select Board comments. Would any members like to make comments? Dan?
Sure. Thank you. So, I just wanted to, you know, first and foremost, thank Lynn over the past, and as well as Ian, who's here. Over the past really couple of weeks, we've had so much information just around budget numbers and clarifying a lot of the information that we got. So, just, I know you do a lot of work for the town, a lot of good work, and I think it should be noted that I certainly appreciate, and I'm sure my colleagues as well, appreciate all the work that you put in to get us this information, to make things a little bit easier, especially during a very difficult budget season. Also, I did want to mention the groundbreaking that a lot of us attended, you know, as well attended by the Long Meadow Select Board. I think, Lynn, you said that the most, we're the best representative contingency of all the towns. So, great project. You know, I think one of the, one of the speakers mentioned, really, the people behind the scenes, really, like the unsung heroes are really the people who are answering the calls. You know, when individuals are in distress, and you have someone at the other end of the phone who's really trying to help, help you talk through things and, you know, get, get our men and women in uniform over as soon as possible to help out. So, I just thought overall, it was a great event, and Lynn, you did a really good job as well, you know, addressing the group and the work that you've done with WestCom. So, that's really all that I wanted to bring up, but thank you.
Okay. Any other Select Board comments? I did get a request, which is surprising, but I guess I share it. Someone suggested that the roads have gotten so bad in town that they wish we would put on a gas tax or some sort of local tax and just put the money towards road construction. And I'm starting to believe that, you know, the reason I see more trucks on the road is because the roads are getting so bad, and we haven't even really gotten to potter season. But, yeah, you know, I think people are, I'm pretty unhappy with Eversource and what they're doing to our roads. And, you know, we, I did hear from Captain Mazafaro that he was very glad that the Select Board stepped up to address that. And, you know, it looks like we have roadwork being done on one end of Long Meadow Street and another project at the other end of Long Meadow Street, and there's not that many exits from town. So, hopefully, they'll go smoothly. All right. If you need, no other comments, we will move on to our Town Manager's Report for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. So, an update on the presidential primaries that were held on March fifth. The town clerk's office mailed out two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three early voting and absentee ballots and received over eighteen hundred and fifty-five early voting and absentee ballots back, so that's a sixty-seven percent response rate. The total ballots cast in person on March fifth were three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven. With the fact that there's twelve thousand seven hundred and sixteen registered voters in town, that turnout equates to twenty-six percent of voters. A big thank you to Tim and Krista in the town clerk's office, and the huge number of volunteers who helped make Election Day run smoothly, and the lead-up to it, processing all the applications for ballots is tremendous. And just to quickly explain the discrepancy between the number of ballots mailed out and the number that came back, sometimes people just don't return them. So, it's not something that should draw any sort of concern there. Was mentioned in Select Board comments, WestCom had a groundbreaking celebration on March fourteenth. I joined with Select Board members, elected officials, state officials, and representatives from the four other communities for a groundbreaking celebration at WestCom's Regional Emergency Communication Center at Shwinnigan Drive in Chicopee. The site is the former Salter College, as you see from the Mass Pike. It's an eighteen thousand square foot facility sitting on twelve acres. It offers adequate space to allow the district to grow. The OPM on the project is Socatech. The architect for the renovation is KBA, and the general contractor is DA Sullivan. Construction's expected to take twelve months to complete. And I just want to call out the Fire Department Grant Award. I had mentioned it a while ago, but now that we're actually seeing the equipment come in as a result of that award, it warrants to be called out again. So, they've now started to receive the equipment that was purchased through those three successful grant applications. As a reminder, the applications awarded over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in funds to be used to upgrade firefighting equipment. The funds were provided by FEMA, MEMA, and the Mass Department of Fire Services. To date, the department has received firefighting hose, supply hose, firefighter turnout gear, brush fire gear, and technical rescue helmets. Additional equipment has been ordered and should be delivered soon. It's a huge effort by the Long Meadow Fire Department Grant Writing Team, writing grants is, is not as easy as it should be, and this is an extra task that they've added on to their duties. And, you know, the biggest benefit we see in this is that it's eliminating the need of town funds to buy these things, because these are needed pieces of equipment that they would have to be bought through their general fund, or capital fund, or some other means. So, a big thank you to the department for making that happen. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Vinit?
Yeah, so I don't have a question, but I just wanted to also say thank you to Tim Krista, the town clerk's office, and all of our volunteers. You know, I am obviously very supportive of expanding ways to vote and, you know, expanding early voting hours, as well as mail-in voting. But there, it is a giant undertaking that during that period totally consumes the town clerk's office, basically. And I, and this is a plea to our statewide officials that municipalities need more resources to be able to continue this new way of voting that, you know, that we're offering our residents. And this is not just an issue that is, you know, unique to Long Meadow. People, communities all over Western Mass are feeling this. And so, I hope that, you know, as voters are adapting to these new ways to vote, that our state government does as well, and allows us to, you know, keep offering this to folks while also be continuing the rest of our town business. So, you know, and this is only a, you know, a small, this is going to be very small compared to what they're going to have to do in October and November. So, thank you to all of our great volunteers, to Tim and Krista. Yep. Just wanted to mention that.
All right. Yeah, there was a few things in the reports, and again, I want to congratulate the Fire Department, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in grants. And you see the photos of what we are getting, it's really impressive. I also wanted to comment on the good police work done to keep our community safe. And in the report, it's very clear that they're on top of what's going on, and they did a great job with that. They also did a nice job addressing a radio issue that emerged, and I know we were just at WestCom, but our chief was stepping up and saying, look, you know, we got to straighten this out, which is great. And then, also, we started a person by the name of Jamie Fraser, who was a mental health co-responder, and they've actually started on a payroll, and they'll be working with us in East Long Meadow. And to have a mental health person, when we talk about police reform, that's what we're talking about. And so, we're really lucky to have a progressive police department and town manager to move forward on this. The other thing is, there was work, talk from the Building Department about, Shakka Road Plaza has poured cement for the floor and some of the, for the structural building, you know, rebuilding of that plaza. I know a lot of people are wondering, you know, what's going to happen with Shakka Road Plaza, and so, that's good news, that that's moving forward since it was, since it caught on fire. The other thing is, there's fourteen forty-six Long Meadow Street, there's four acres there, and the house on that property caught on fire, and so, there's some question about, there will be, planned to demolish that, and it'll be interesting to see what'll happen with that four acres on Long Meadow Street. It is zoned, residents. And the other thing is, it talked, in the DPW's report, it talked about intending to move forward on a redundant water tank, and, you know, I, I'm not quite sure, because I know that issue came up about having a second water tank, but then, we talked about maybe it being a cistern, not a tank up in the air, but one on the ground. And so, I know you probably can't answer that question, but, you know, let the DPW know that I'd like to hear more about progress on that, because it would be a lot more expensive to put a tank in the air versus a tank on the ground next to our water tank. And I'd like to know if that's being considered. So, that's, that's all I had, but great reports. Any other comments? Yes, Josh?
I just wanted to give kudos to Jersey Mikes for donating five grand to the library. I think that's pretty great. And I know it's to get free sandwiches, so it's a lot of money. So, thank you to everyone who did that. And I just had a question about the mail-in votes. I know that the clerk is supposed to have a ballot for everyone, in case everyone shows up to vote. What is the, how does that factor with mailing? Do you have to have a mail-in vote for everyone, or is that, is that why there's a deadline to request them?
Well, everyone gets an application, right?
Yes.
So, if you send an application, then you'll be mailed in, you know.
Yeah, but do you have to have one ready to go for every person? Or, I guess my question is really, if somebody requests it and then doesn't use it...
They can still show up at the polls.
So, it's just a waste of money.
When you go to register, Josh, somebody voted by mail-in vote, their names indicated that they already voted by mail-in vote.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean, I'm not worried about fraud. It's just people are, it's annoying to have an extra thousand mail-in ballots that get mailed out that don't get used.
It happens a lot, where, or people will hand-deliver their mail-in ballot to the precinct.
I was in the clerk when somebody was doing that. I said, do not...
Yep, it happens a lot. Or they selected vote by mail, and they changed their mind, and they want to go to the polls that day.
I mean, sixty-seven percent, it's a pretty good rate, but when it's a thousand that is just going out to the ether, that's, it's too bad.
And people need to remember that our ballots are, are precinct-specific, so it's not like, well, gee, we got, you know, too many people show up in this precinct, but we got extra ballots for another precinct. You can't switch, switch ballots from one precinct to the other.
Okay.
Maybe they're the same ballot.
Questions on the town report? Okay. So, next, we have old business. We look for approval of the minutes for February twentieth, the Select Board. We have a motion to approve those.
I'll move. We approve the February twentieth minutes.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. And next is the discussion and vote on the two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement plan. The board briefly discussed the capital improvement plan and the recommendations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five at our previous meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the board about the capital plan that was submitted? Mark Hall?
At the last meeting, we were discussing a letter that came from the Permanent Building Committee, and the question, I thought at the time, was the request, there was a recommendation to spend seven hundred thousand dollars of capital for Wool Swamp Road School Chillers. And I thought the question we had for the town manager, who appears to have subcontracted it to our CFO, was if we were to bond that instead, what other capital projects could we spend it on? The memo we got didn't answer that question, other than to say, maybe roads. But, but, you know, we didn't ask about how to bond it, we didn't ask about the best way to bond it, we just wanted to know, were there other capital projects? And I think that, the reason for me was that we had capital requests this year that were millions of dollars more than we were able to approve. And so, the question still remains, you know, is there anything on that list we could move up from two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-five if we, if we were to bond seven hundred thousand dollars? And I'm not sure that, other than spend more money on roads and maybe sidewalks, we heard that answer. And so, I'm still asking that question. The other thing is, in terms of a letter we did get, it's my opinion, it's only my opinion, that even if we were to bond this capital project, or bond the chillers as a capital project, because it's a capital project, I would expect the bond payments, interest in principle, to go against the capital stabilization fund, and not against the general bonding capability of the town. Kind of defeats the purpose of having a capital stabilization fund, in my mind. And I use as an example, we built an entire public safety complex that we bonded and spent, used capital stabilization funds to pay the bond in principle for that. But that's beside the point. The question is, is there a better use of that seven hundred thousand dollars? And if the answer is no, and all I saw was roads, and so, I'm assuming no, I'm just going to go with, let's use capital for the seven hundred thousand dollars for the chiller.
Okay.
So, and, and Mark, you're referring to the new letter from the Permanent Building Committee, right? Because Ian's memo, he outlines different ways we could use that seven hundred thousand dollars.
But only one of them was capital. In other words, I didn't see in his letter any of the, what I'll call, two thousand and twenty-six or rejected capital items, or not rejected, but below the funding level capital items, that we said, if we bonded that, we could move those up, Vinit. Those, that's, that's what I was thinking would be the difference. You're right, he said, there's a lot of ways to spend, believe me, we got a lot of ways to spend seven hundred thousand dollars. I thought the request was, how do we spend it on things that were on the capital list?
Okay.
Okay. So, but the, you know, your premise of, of taking things that we know, like we're going to have to replace three of these chillers, you know, and maybe bonding them out, I don't know if that seemed appealing to other people. Or Lynn, did you have a comment on that? Or, I don't know. I mean, it, it does make a lot of sense, you know, and I think that's why, you know...
Remember, who it was appealing to was the Building Committee, not necessarily other people. It was just the question of if we were, and that's, I think, I mean, I was at the Building Committee meeting. The question was, you know, since we couldn't fund all the things on the capital list for two thousand and twenty-three, if we were to bond that, what other items might we be able to bond? That's all, that was the only, the only request.
Yeah. Wouldn't seven hundred grand really cover almost everything that wasn't on here, right?
That was the point, Josh.
Well, yeah, but I mean, other than roads, obviously. It's mower, tabulators, police trim, project design, there's a whole lot of stuff that we could fill in. I just, I don't know, I, I don't know if that's the route we want to take.
Well, yeah, and the question is, are those, are those just pipe dreams by the people who submitted them, or are they really necessities that we'd really want to move up the list?
Yeah.
And that was, that was the question I had when we said that, because I'm fine with saying we're going to, nope, we're going to bond the, we're going to use the seven hundred thousand capital for the chillers. I'm fine with saying that, but I think we need to understand that, you know, the chillers are, it's a major capital item, seven hundred thousand dollars. It lasts long enough that, to my mind, it's kind of like a roof or a parking lot or something like that, that we could bond it, but we don't have to. So, that was, I think, why the question was asked.
So, Ian, since we have you here, I get, what, two questions. One is, do you think this is something we should be moving in the direction, because we do sort of bond money and for like, things like replacing ambulances, was Mark's example. But the other thing is, you know, if we bonded it, if it was related to our stabilization, capital stabilization fund, would that seem like a better idea than, than some other way of bonding it? Would be one thing. I guess we'll start that.
Sure. So, I guess to clarify your first question, when you mean go forward with something, do you mean go forward with working with the chiller in any capacity, whether that be buying it or bonding it? So, to that question first, you know, it is a primary need right now. I think that we have established that the schools need it. So, you know, I certainly don't see a problem with going forward with that project. However, we have the short-term debt capacity right now, if we want to do other projects on top of the chiller, where I tried to present an option where we could use these funds otherwise in order to fund roadwork, which is really needed and has been represented to the Select Board by town residents, as well as the literacy program, which has been presented by the school department, as well as debt service that could help us get in a more comfortable position with our current debt capacity.
But those aren't capital, Ian, with all due respect.
Oh, no, I understand.
I mean, there's a lot of things we can spend seven hundred thousand. The question was, what capital items could we move up on priority list?
And I apologize that that, I didn't answer that question.
Well, we obviously weren't clear with the question. That's why I'm, I'm reiterating it now, is, you know, what, I mean, frankly, you know, I don't, I don't know what there is, but I just know that there's this massive request for capital that far exceeded our availability. And like I said, I, I still believe that, you know, I, I hear your comment about, we have the borrowing capacity. Frankly, if we're borrowing for capital, it ought to go, be paid for out of the capital fund. That's my personal opinion.
Sure.
So, that's, that's neither here nor there. The question is, how badly do we need some of these other capital items? And I don't hear anybody rushing to say we need these.
No, I think, oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, Josh. I think the point that you and Josh made, Mark, is that we have the current capacity within the capital fund, or the capital budget fund, to do these other projects if we so chose. And I can certainly write that up as a different memo, if that's the path that you're looking to do.
We don't need that. I, you know, Lynn, maybe this goes back to you, you know, the, the original request was prioritized, and things weren't funded because we didn't have enough money. I'm, I'm agreeable that the seven hundred thousand dollars, that the, excuse me, that the purchase of a chiller is a high priority item and ought to be done. So, that's not what I'm questioning, replacing the chiller with something else. I'm saying, fund the chiller eighty thousand dollars, whatever it is a year for ten years, or, you know, twice that for, for five years, whatever it is, and try to bring in a couple other projects that we can't otherwise do. That's the only, my only concern about this, because I didn't go through the capital request with the, with the fine-tooth comb that, that others did. I mean, for example, election tabulators, clearly, I'm not sure we want to do that in an election year, but it's on the list, didn't get funded, and that's the first thing I'm looking at.
Josh, I just, I can't remember, because I think the... Josh, I just, I can't remember, because I think the formula is too depressing to me. How much, $700,000, how much paving is that?
Well, it depends on what type of paving you're talking about.
Pretty good?
Yeah. It's crack ceiling, mill in place, mill in overlay, a full reclaim, like, it depends on the road, it depends on what it needs. I mean, if you're asking me, I think the, the money goes towards roads. You can never go wrong with putting more money towards fixing roads. And yeah, I mean, there's a ton of different things we could do with it, but to me, that was the biggest area that could really benefit from additional funding. I mean, a $500,000 increase almost doubles what we're doing in capital.
Right, and that's, that's really where I'm leaning. It was four million, I, I know that our, I can't remember what our recommended that we spend in our street study, but it was probably more than four million.
Four to five, yeah.
But I think this is another thing we're just gonna keep falling behind on. If we can, if we can do it, I think that we should put more money towards it now. And I understand that the sidewalk is, I think there's a good reason not to do that this year. But the, the roads, any little piece we can do to get ahead of ourselves and help this, help us down the road, I think we should do.
Was there any supplemental capital to roads, or were we gonna be all just chapter 90?
No, they're supplemental.
Right, so.
Yeah, it's, what is it, 725 for roads and then, and then chapter 90 on top of it.
Which is like nine, 960,000 or something like that? Or is it 460? I think it's 460.
Yeah, it's four, it's like 470 almost, yeah.
Right, right. So.
Well, I, you know, I think, I've never heard more complaints about roads than all the years I've been on the board.
Okay.
And, you know, we're, so it would make sense to do that. Plus, we have several chillers we have to replace. And so, maybe, maybe.
I, I can't get around doing Glenbrook.
Glenbrook, yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
Tom? Yes, Mark.
Well, if, I'm gonna make a motion that we increase the road paving capital from 747 to 50 by adding $500,000, which is, would be 1.1,247,250, and take the other $200,000 and use that as a, as the first year of a bond payment for bonding the, the chiller for the Wolf Swamp Road School.
Okay, I'd, I'd second that motion. We can discuss it, yes.
Where would that put us on repayment, Ian?
For the chiller or for the short-term debt?
If we did a bond for 700, immediately put 200 towards it.
I mean, it would depend on a couple of factors. One, it would depend on what the timeframe is for how long we wanna bond for. Say it's for 15 years. I mean, I understand, Mark, that it's not, you know, it's not something that we wanna bond for that long, but on a normal timeframe, it would be about a 15-year payback, so that would take off, say, a quarter of it.
Okay, alright.
So we'd be at 10 years, let's say, on a normal debt schedule.
Question of motion.
Oh, no, sorry, so I, I would like to discuss this a little bit more. I have a question for Ian. So in your memo, you, at the second half of it, you kind of talk more about the implications of bonding. And I think, I appreciate how you were also looking at some of the projects that we have coming up, including our middle school project. So could you just walk us through those parts of your memo a little bit?
Where would you like me to start?
Just the town's current capacity for debt.
Sure.
And future capacity. So, yeah, I mean, 'cause I, I know that bonding out for such a small amount of money, quote unquote, like 500,000 or 700,000, that there are implications of that. It can make it more difficult.
Yep.
To get a ban or a bond, and, you know, in our position in the future. So just interested in hearing that. And also, I know that you talk about the debt exclusions here and how we're kind of running up into some of those select board policies that we've set in place.
Yes.
For the percentages for how much we can take on, so.
Would it be beneficial to go through the entire thing for the residents? Or do you want me to just go for a more summarized version?
I think, go, go for it all.
Okay, alright. So, Vaneeh is asked to go through the town's current capacity for debt as part of the memo that I've shared with the select board regarding the current state of the debt for the town of Long Meadow. The town does have the debt capacity to fund the chiller as a bond sale, if you go to the debt capacity allowed per the select board policy. Per the debt management policy of the Long Meadow Select Board, the town will endeavor to have the general fund debt service as a percent of general fund budgeted operating expenditures of no more than 12%. If enterprise fund debt is issued as general obligation debt, then the enterprise fund debt service will be added to the general fund debt service when calculating the percent of debt service to the general fund budgeted operating expenditures. For reference, our current FY25 operating expenditures for the general fund is $76,138,900. As a dollar amount, 12% debt service compared to the operating expenditures gives the town a maximum of $9,136,668 annually. With the most recent enterprise fund debt service being general obligation debt, this was the water and sewer improvements project of 11.62 million in January 2024, this will be included in the calculation of debt service. As of January 2024, our annual debt service for long-term debt will be $8,225,223 for FY25. That puts us at 90%, or gives us a excess debt service capacity of 911,000 for any remaining bonding. This means that the town has the ability to bond if the select board would approve. However, doing so would limit our capacity for future borrowings unless the policy is increased. I go on further to explain the town's future capacity for debt exclusion. With the new middle school on the horizon and other capital needs, I think it is critical to understand our entire debt picture. Another item of the select board debt management policy I want to highlight is the following. In any fiscal year, the proposition two and a half excludable debt service will not exceed 10% of the total property tax revenue. Large capital projects are often voted on by town residents for debt exclusion. Debt exclusion allows for debt service on a capital project to be excluded from the levy limit for the life of the debt. Based on the select board policy above, the FY25 budget would allow for a maximum of $6,378,995 of debt exclusion. 10% of this would be at $63,789,949 of property taxes, based on the percentage. The town, the year that the town would be looking to borrow for the middle school project is fiscal year 2026, which is fall of '25. As the final price of the new middle school is currently unknown, we can only guess that the project will cost upwards of $100 million. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, the organization that is helping the town finance the project, will provide a yet-to-be-determined reimbursement rate on the project. However, for estimation purposes, if we assume a reimbursement rate of 50% on an assumed project cost of $120 million, the town would need to roughly borrow about $60 million. Using a 30-year debt timeline and a 5.5% interest rate, that could represent 3.4 million of debt service on the town on an annual basis. However, the Municipal Empowerment Act increases the repayment timeline to 40 years. So this is a potential option for the town. With the current debt exclusion for FY2025 at 5.9 million, we have excess debt capacity, debt exclusion capacity of 418,596. Thus, under the current policy, the town would exceed the 10% excludable debt service with the passing of this middle school, putting our debt, our excludable debt service at an estimated $9,367,133, or 147% of the allowable debt exclusion. I bring this to the attention of the select board now because I would like to begin discussion soon on how we approach funding the middle school project or any other projects where borrowing is considered. I caution that everything stated in the preceding paragraph is an estimate, and there is room for variability. After the town meeting, I will have additional time to do research to determine if any changes should be made to these policies, and I will share my findings with the select board to better shape our debt management for the changing needs of the town of Long Meadow.
Okay, thank you. Mark.
Yeah. Perhaps my motion needs some clarification. Because I, my intent was that we would, yes, use $200,000 for Wolf Swamp Road School chillers now, but more importantly, that we would charge the, the debt plus interest moving forward to the capital stabilization fund. I think we ought to set a time duration for doing that. I would like to suggest 10 years, not 20 or 30 years to do that. But more importantly, I think people need to understand that on the Long Meadow L project, last spring, we authorized $11 million in debt, and we borrowed $11 million. I understand the contract hasn't been finalized, but the bids came in about half of that. You know, we have money that at town meeting, we would need to reappropriate. I think it's, is the phrase, we have to, if you will, unappropriate it from the L project and reappropriate. We don't have to borrow any more physical money. We just have to move money that we appropriated for a project we're not using into something like this. So the whole question of, do we have to borrow more, is moved, because we don't have to borrow more. This is an insignificant, and nor would I ever suggest we go out and bond 500,000. I mean, that's an insignificant amount of money. Bonding costs are gonna, would overwhelm you.
Mark, if I can offer some clarification. I spoke to our bond financial advisor, and I asked him, if the bids haven't to come in much lower than expected, what can we do with this debt? And he said, as long as it's used towards sewer and water projects that would be in line with what we were doing previously, there would be no issues.
Correct. But we also are allowed by law to go in as a town meeting and unappropriate money. And therefore, take the $11 million and take, take it down to $7 million, or two, or, or five and a half or something, and reappropriate, because we've done that with other things that have run low. So I understand our, he's saying, what can we do with the $11 million bucks? I get that. We can, we can spend that on water and sewer, because that's all we told people we're spending it. But I'm saying, and spend it on non-water and sewer through actions of a town meeting, but not actually go out to the bond market and borrow an additional amount of money. That's, that's, because, Vaneeh, I thought that was your question about all this, what does it cost us? And how do, we don't have to borrow more money. What we have to do is reallocate, or reappropriate is the actual phrase, I believe. Reappropriate money we already borrowed to, to do this. So that's why I'm suggesting we do it through, through borrowing.
So to reappropriate the money that, or to reappropriate that bond that was set aside?
A portion of that.
A portion of bond for the L project. That would change the source of funding, right? Because we are trying to pay for that through, we would be paying that, for that through the enterprise fund.
But, but we would change that in the reappropriation.
But that's a, that's a big deal.
No, it isn't to.
I mean, that would, I mean, that for the budget, right? If we're paying for the bond through the enterprise fund versus the general fund.
But no, but, yeah, but we're gonna pay for it through the capital portion of the general fund. That's correct. But I, it, it's, it's not a big deal. I mean, it's, just needs to be, whether you borrow new, whether it's a ban, a bond, or whatever, or you reappropriate money you've already borrowed, either way, the general fund's gotta pay the cost of that new borrowing. Right? I mean, the, it, a, a chiller that's, that's purchased with borrowed money has to be repaid out of the general fund. I'm suggesting on the general fund line that that be charged to the capital line item, because it's a capital purchase.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand that part, yeah.
So, so I, it's not, to me, you know, what we're really doing, frankly, is lessening the burden on the water and sewer enterprise funds, who are right now paying all that $11 million that we've borrowed, when they're not using all that $11 million quite yet.
And this would be a different, a new warrant article?
Well, I think it, my, my memory is, it takes a couple of warrant articles. One to unappropriate the money, and another one to reappropriate it for this purpose.
But the, you know, unused money from that bond for the L project, I mean, we have plenty of water work to be done. And instead of having to go to town meeting to unappropriate, appropriate, right? We could be putting that money towards replacing water lines.
We don't have anything right now, not $5 million worth.
I, I think that we do have a lot. I mean, I think that the L project was a priority. I think that we have, I mean, from the, just from the presentation, we have, we've replaced .7 miles of water lines in the last 20 years, when we're supposed to be replacing basically a mile every year.
So this is a case of, we've got the money, burn a hole in our pocket, let's go spend it. I mean, I don't think the DPW can manage $11 million worth of water projects, frankly.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I mean, they just wanna pay interest on it, while they don't have something to actually do.
Oh, the impression I got was that there is.
I, I know, we don't have the plan, we don't have, because we gotta like, pay for the, the study and have a plan going forward. We, we clearly saw there's lots to do, but we have to, can't just decide to go rip up the street without a plan.
Yeah.
I, I totally know what you're saying, but that's a lot of money to pay interest on, if we don't need to.
And so if we, another question is, if we put $700,000 towards, another $700,000 towards roads, I know that there's a lot of construction, a lot going on this year in Long Meadow. Is that something that, you know, DPW and town has capacity for? Or going to, you know, be putting that much more money towards roads?
Yeah, the $700,000 won't have as big of an impact operationally. Sadly, it doesn't go.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple of miles, a hundred miles.
Alright, so any other questions for Ian, or we have, yes?
I, I had the same question, I think, that Josh did to Lynn earlier today when we met. How, how fu, or how much money, you know, we're talking 200 grand, what is that for roads? Like, what does that mean, you know? But I just, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I'm on record as well. And I appreciate Mark's motion here for the roads, because this is something, I mean, I mean, we're all feeling it. Text messages, calls, emails. It's tangible. Like I said last week, it's like driving from one end of town to the other, it's like Frogger. So I'm, I'm glad that we're certainly listening to the residents, and this is a, you know, this is an issue where I think we, we need to, to go down this direction, you know, this time around, because the roads, I mean, I've been along though a very long time, and I don't think I've seen the roads as bad. So I think it's gonna be popular by the, the residents and taxpayers. I wish we had more funds to, to do more exciting things, but this is kind of, you know, what we deal with from like, the calls and the, the complaints. So, again, I appreciate the, the motion, Mark, and, you know, happy to support it. Josh.
Josh?
Yeah, I just have one more thing. Ian, I, I just want to thank you for doing the memo. It didn't, I know it didn't necessarily answer Mark's question, and we didn't, but we did follow one of the recommendations mostly, or maybe exactly. But it was useful to see it laid out, and I appreciate that. I know it's, it's probably a lot of work, but the more you can do this, this is good for us, this is good for the town. People look at the agenda, it's good to get an explanation. Municipal finance is not an easy thing, so.
Lynn certainly helped out, so I'd like to thank her as well for the efforts that she made.
Alright.
Thanks. And just to point out, just to be the, the depressing part of this conversation, the capital thing is only a piece of it. I don't, I think for Ian preparing the memo, you, it, it's exactly what you want your finance director to do. You, you don't wanna just look at this one project in this tiny little picture. You need to look at the whole picture. And so that's what Ian's attempt is in this memo. Regardless of the capital conversation, we definitely need a debt conversation. And I think that's something we should strive to put on our goals, or start that conversation in April.
I can't, I know we talked about this at MSNBC, but it, we, we only have to, or, we don't have to bond out the whole amount of the school, it's what's after the reimbursement? Significant difference.
High school, we bonded 44 million in '76.
Okay, yeah.
And the, the, the money that we borrowed for the high school, where are we at? How much do we, you know, at some point, we should find out how much we owe on that, because I know it's dropping down.
Not very fast.
Keep me one second.
I thought it was coming off fairly soon. What?
We borrowed three slugs for this, the school, and we refinanced at least two of them.
Oh, jeez, yeah.
Because the interest rates. Because the interest rates kept going down. That was great.
Sometimes coming off.
Yeah, there, there's stuff coming off in '26, '27.
I think it's the roof, a roof or something like that. A roof of a school we don't have anymore, something like that. And Greenwood Park roof too.
I just got the town, I don't know what you people are doing. Well, because I know the '26, '27, some of the costs are gonna drop on that, so we've timed it pretty well. All right, do you have a number?
Do you want to know the principal left on the Long Meadow High School or as a total?
Well, let's, the principal.
15.5 million.
15?
15.5 million.
13?
15.5.
15.5?
Yeah.
That's great.
Does that change your mind on what to do with the chillers?
No, no, that's, that's.
That's out of an initial 44.
Buy a lot of chillers.
It's projected pay down is in fiscal year 41.
Oh.
Retired.
You're a long way off. I'll be dead.
All right, well, thank you. So, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded, we've had plenty of discussion, ready?
Well, yeah, I just want to say that I, I had concerns about just borrowing in the way that, you know, was kind of first proposed, but to borrow, you know, in the way.
Re-appropriate.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, or, you know, borrowing from, you know, capital stabilization fund, or using that, sorry, to, that makes sense. Because I, you know, looking at this, it looks like, you know, we're hitting, you know, almost our percentages, our numbers here for how much debt we can take on. So, I, I'm glad Ian put that on our radar and I want to be mindful of that.
Okay, so we will vote on this motion and then we will vote on accepting the capital plan. We need a motion for that, but.
Can we just fully state the motion again?
Sure. I, I move that.
Will we include the capital plan in this motion too?
I think we have to amend it, of course, right?
Yeah, I think we have to amend it. Let's amend. I, I move that we amend the capital plan by adding $500,000 to the roads and removing the $700,000 for the Wolf Swamp Road School chiller. And, but paying for the principal and interest from the Wolf Swamp Road School chiller from current and future capital funds, not to exceed a 10-year period of time.
Or can we accept the capital plan as amended?
Technically, you accept the capital plan when we implement it into the warrant anyway, so.
Okay. All right, so, so, you know, this amendment to the capital plan and we'd be voting to accept the capital plan as amended, right?
Yeah, you can also.
We'll be ready to go, we'll do it one vote and all those in favor.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, so, good, yeah. Give me a second to tell. I, I seconded last time, I'm gonna second again. All right, so now we move on to the exciting part, Town Manager's Budget Presentation with Lynn and our Finance Director, Ian Goddington. And let's go, we got our PowerPoint going, we've got pages and pages to review.
Second one, all right.
All right, yes, thank you. Yes, the long-awaited FY25 budget. So, we followed the similar format here and a huge thank you to Ian, first, first budget year here and he was a tremendous help in this process. So, we're gonna share a little bit on this presentation together tonight and so certainly feel free to ask us both questions. So, the budget that is presented to you tonight is balanced without the use of reserves. Currently uses the full allowable levy limit of 2.5% and funds the capital plan. Some revenue highlights for us, although, you know, they're somewhat lowlights because the revenue increases are barely stagnant. We show the property tax increase, 1.639 million. State aid, which is our second largest source of revenue, only increasing 1.15. If you recall, in our budget kickoff in December, we were projecting 4% because that's what we had been trending. So, obviously, we had to lower our budget estimates as a result of that. So, that took a hit to the budget, so we had to go trim, trim some things back to fit into this. Local receipts are still holding pretty strong at 6.44%. Water and sewer and stormwater are also doing well. The note I have in the comment there is about weather impacts. That's something we watch as it relates to water because obviously, the more rain we get, the less people are using in their yards and that has an impact on the revenue that we bring in there. So, we are closely watching that. Next slide. So, our expense highlight here, this, I think it was stated at the school department budget presentation and I thought it absolutely reflected what we're dealing with here on the town side. This is a preservation budget. We are not seeing anything, any new initiatives really. There is no, unfortunately, there's no attempt at funding the roads to the level that we need to, the trees that we need to, or the active recreation conditions assessment. There is a moderate amount of money put in for that, but not nearly enough that we need to really start making progress in these areas. And so, there's also been a lot of talk about percentage changes and, you know, holding certain places, holding certain departments to certain levels. And as you can see here in that percent change category, 3% at the schools is not the same as a 3% in planning and community development or general government or public safety. So, it's really not quite a fair thing to do is just look at percentage, percentages. You really need to dig into it more and look at each department as an individual line. And that, you can see that it reflected in the column on the right where a 3% at the schools is 1.16 million, whereas a 4.47 increase in planning and community development is $16,000. So, again, just those percentages don't tell the full story. Next slide. So, some notable items in the FY25 budget. We have the water and sewer enterprise debt service, including that 11 million in general obligation bonds to service the water mains and sewer improvements. Just talked about that in the prior conversation. There is a very modest $75,000 allocation for athletic field reseeding. This is in the DPW grounds department and is directly in response to the active recreation area conditions assessment. This is just the tip of the iceberg for what they would need. This is fully funding the request that they made, so I'm very happy about that. But I do think we, we would need to see a lot more funding in order to start making some really serious progress. We were able to add a full-time equivalent sustainability coordinator. This is a position that we've talked about for a while now and we did actually have it posted last year to partially fund for last fiscal year. We did not reach a successful negotiation with one candidate that we had and since we've reposted, we have not received any candidates that meet minimum qualifications. So, we have the position here in the budget. I do think it's something we greatly need because so many of the grants that we're seeing right now have this focus and we could really benefit from somebody with this background. And it's a town-wide position. It's not just DPW, it's not just the police or fire departments, you know, sustainability initiatives, it's town-wide, including schools. So, I'm hopeful that that could come to fruition. Another area that I'm actually really happy about is the full-time equivalent in the administrative, in the administrative assistant capacity, split between our purchasing department and our assessors office. We're able to do this because there is a part-time position in the assessors office that would no longer be funded. Those funds would then be put toward this full-time position. We have seen a massive increase in the amount of work in the procurement office and that's directly related to the work that DPW is doing. So, DPW cannot do their job without our procurement manager right there getting all the contracts together, getting quotes, going out to bid, awarding the contracts. And that increase in work is incredibly time-consuming and he, they would greatly benefit from having some admin help there. And conveniently enough, when we move to Greenwood, the assessors office is going to be sharing a space with the purchasing manager. So, this allows that clerk to sit in that office and staff the counter as well, full time. We also have the second year debt service payment for the middle school feasibility study and the high school air handlers. One thing to note is we are not fully funding the OPEB as called for in the select board policy. This is somewhat turning into a trend year after year. It's an area where we do have some flexibility in reducing funding to try to absorb funding needs in operations. And so, we have, we have done that. We have also historically come back at fall town meeting and funded the remainder of OPEB with free cash. We can have a conversation about whether we do that or not, or whether we try to use that free cash to go after some other, you know, high needs items. And then, one of the biggest impacts was the Westcom assessment. As we've known, we've, we went into Westcom knowing that the grant that we would receive would cover 100% of our assessment for three years, 50% for one year, and then 25% the last year and then the years, out, out years after that, the town is responsible for 100% of the assessment. So, we've been seeing that, that support trend down and you will notice in the public safety line item, they have a large percentage increase and that's mostly attributed to the Westcom assessment. It's split 50/50 between fire and police. So, some challenges. Certainly, the state aid coming in a lot lower than we expected is, it was a massive challenge given that it's our second largest funding source. So, that, that is something we're gonna continue to watch because the budget is still just preliminary at this point and it could suffer further cuts once it fully passes, so we're gonna continue to keep an eye on that. Additional challenges are the, the reports that you all received over this last fiscal year talking about the need for road improvements and public shade tree funding to address both deferred maintenance and the deficit that we have in our tree canopy. Unfortunately, those, I was not able to fit those needs, increased needs into, increased funding for those needs into this budget and those needs do remain. We continue to have maintenance challenges and the budget for maintaining all of these buildings continues to grow. And so, that, that is definitely a challenge, especially as repairs are not keeping up with need. Costs can grow in that area very quickly. We have aging infrastructure, you know, you've also received reports on that and the cost to maintain that is outsourced, outpacing revenues. Debt management in preparation for the middle school project, as you just heard about, you know, we have to talk about debt in, in much greater detail. The limited revenue sources that we have are, are still a challenge and our operating costs are continuing to grow. And just to put it somewhat into context here, the overall increase to the general fund operating budget is 1.358 million for FY25. The school increase is 1.16 million. So, that increase for the school department represents 86% of the fiscal '25 general fund operating increase. So, that, that's a pretty staggering number when you start thinking about what else needs to be funded out of the general fund. It makes doing a budget much more challenging. So, some future challenges, or I'm sorry, future considerations that we have on the horizon. Certainly, we're gonna continue to track the state budget, whether it increases or decreases unrestricted general government aid, that's gonna have an impact on our budget. Same with Chapter 70, we're also gonna be watching that because increases or decreases have an impact on us. Implementation of the wage classification study, this, this will have an impact on FY25 budget. Net metering agreement adjustment, this could be a very positive impact for us. I have not built it fully into the FY25 budget because I don't want to get ahead of myself without having those agreements fully in place and approved by you. But Ian and I have made a conscious effort in the FY25 budget to start reducing some of those utility, electric utility accounts down because we do believe that this is going to come to fruition early in the fiscal year and provide us some relief on our electricity accounts. EV charging, you'll see in the DPW line item detail, they now have a line for EV charging. That has not been budgeted before because the equipment was not live. It is budgeted now and it shows a pretty large percent increase because we didn't have it before, but it's also costly to run these chargers monthly. And so, we're gonna continue to monitor that to see if there's other ways of doing this while still providing EV charging that maybe are not so financially constraining to the We have the two studies here, the pavement management and the tree, actually, three studies, the tree study and the active rec conditions assessment. You know, just because we don't have those funded to the level that we think we need to in the FY25 budget, I do think they're important considerations to have moving forward, especially as we look at grants or as we look at changes to the budget, you know, perhaps the state comes back with a, with a positive increase for us and then we can talk about, you know, where do we want to put those based on some of these studies that we've had done. So, those are just some things that, you know, we still have on the horizon. The budget is certainly a moving document and these things all have impacts to it. So, I will kick it to Ian to talk just where we are with some of our reserve funds and, and what's this last one here? And our available fund balances.
Sure, so as you can see, over the last nine to 10 years, we have a different fluctuation in terms of free cash and operating stabilization. The really big thing I want to highlight is the operating stabilization fund. We have continued to see a great increase in the fund, which allows us to plan for reserves in terms of unanticipated issues in the future, whether that be severe weather events or major issues when it comes to emergencies within the town. I think it's very important to be prudent and to realize that we have those funds available for emergencies and, you know, really have a conversation in terms of what we need to use those funds for if something like that were to arise. In terms of free cash, we have been very fortunate that we've had such a large free cash balance in the last five years, especially with the last two years being, I think, the highest on record. So, it's been really helpful for us to do projects in the fall and to plan for, you know, spending needs that we might not be able to already. The last slide looks at our available fund balances as of 1-1. So, the current free cash balance is 499,000 and I think Lynn and I have discussed current options with what we're gonna do with that money available. Operating stabilization fund, I already touched on. The capital stabilization fund is a small balance, but that's a small piece of the capital budget as a whole. Water and sewer retained earnings are at a healthy 713,000 and a 513,000 with stormwater being at 573,000. Just as a note for the select board, per the policies, retained earnings are to stay at a minimum of $500,000 for each of the enterprise funds. And we will discuss this later, but we have some articles talking about using some of the retained earnings for reducing the water weight and I think that's an important discussion that I want to have with you guys in terms of where that will put us in the future. The last two items are ambulance reserve fund, which we're using to fund a new ambulance, which is at a healthy rate, and the last being our OPEB trust, which is at 6.6 million.
Okay, so that wraps up our, our formal presentation here. We, we are waiting for a date for the finance committee to hold their public hearing on the budget. The select board is scheduled to vote on the budget on April 1st and a copy of this PowerPoint, along with all the supporting documents, will be uploaded to the website tomorrow.
Okay, do we have any questions on presentation at this point, Marko?
I have a few. I'm just gonna start with the target amounts for our, our stabilization funds, water, sewer, stormwater particularly, retained earnings funds have been set many years ago and there was a basis for it. The basis was, you know, there was a significant outage and we defined what the outage was and what it would cost to repair that to make sure that we had the money to pay for that. The question is, and this is a rhetorical question, I'm not looking for any answers, should we not now, given all that's been going on the last few years, go back and take another look at what, what the. look at what, what the appropriate levels of those retained earnings funds should be? Because if we don't, with a target of a maximum of $500,000, we're 50% over, give or take, or 40% over certainly, on the, on the water retained earnings fund. And ought not be, you know, ought not let that be there if we don't need it. So for me, just in what you've prepared, I think that's a, something we need to look at, and I think it rises to the level of letting the Select Board decide what are the appropriate targets for those, for those funds, or if the current funds are appropriate. Because if they are, they are good sources of revenue and, and cost. I guess the other thing is, Lynn, you sent us a detailed budgets item. At what point do you want any questions about the, the, either the detailed line item, but certainly sources and uses? I have some questions about the sources and uses. I'd like to try to get clarified, like, under sources of, and uses, just that one piece, one page. Are, you know, what is the agreement with other towns in regard to our regional health system? Is there actual income from the other towns that comes to Long Meadow and we pay all the bills? Or do they pay, because it, you know, I guess I'm asking what category it show up with if there's that income?
So it does not show up in a category. Might, does it show up in receipts at all? No, no. It is a grant, it's purely a, a grant. And so like the rest of our grants, they don't necessarily show up in our sources. And so the way that works is we structured it similar to the, actually, the Westcom assessment, where the total budget for the Health Department is developed, and then the Public Health Excellence Grant is taken off the top, and then what is remaining is then parsed out based on a structure set up in our originating document by percentage of population. So, I think Wilberham and Long Meadow pay the highest percentage, and then Munson and Hamden.
For a percent, Mark, Long Meadow is at 36.4%, and Wilberham is at 33.5%. So we are the largest piece of the Health Department assessment.
So, so when I look through this budget, what shows up as expenses for the Health Department is actually 36.4% of the real cost of running the Health Department, or it's 100% of the cost of running the Long Meadow Department, even though it's only 36.4% of the overall cost of the, you understand what I'm trying to?
I think I understand what you're trying to say. Unfortunately, the budgeted amounts in the line item detail do not reflect the entire cost of the Health Department. This is the only, the only piece that you see in the line item detail is what the general fund covers. The rest of it is then covered by the grant, and then whatever shortfall remains is then picked up on the back end.
Okay, so this isn't, I just want to clear, so this isn't then a, if you will, an operating cost budget, this is an expense budget, if you will.
In terms of?
What it costs us, not what it costs.
In terms of just the Health Department?
Right.
You could, that could be an argument you could make.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it, it's not necessarily wrong. I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at here.
Right, and so one of the things that Ian and I are working on for next budget year is to be more transparent with that. This is a model that, that's just been the way it is, and we've been.
Because when, when those grants go away.
Exactly.
Right, no, exactly.
That's what we've been saying.
So, as of right now, Mark, Finn has been working with Lynn and myself to develop a budget of shared services with all the communities that are involved. So, he's been tracking for the last three years, including what is proposed for FY '25, what the full department will cost full boat, everything included.
That's fine, I, I just, I'm asking because I was under the impression, absent this grant, which I understand is there, was that Long Meadow was going to run it, and other towns were going to reimburse us for a percentage of the cost because, you know, they, they benefit from it. So that's why I was looking for what their reimbursement was and have the, and I'm fine with saying, look, the Health Department costs three times, give or take, what it really takes to run the Long Meadow Department, but there's this offsetting source of revenue that says payment from other towns for the Health Department. So, that's why, the purpose of my question, okay?
Yep.
That's fine.
And just this year, we, we received commitment from the state that the Public Health Excellence Grant is funded through 2035. So that changes how we can account, show this at least. And you're, you're right, when the grant goes away, we've got four people here that we've been paying out of this grant. So, the budget really should show you what the full cost to operate the Health Department is, and so that will be done next year in the FY '26 budget.
Yeah, I was just, thank you, because I was suggesting that we show as a source of revenue, even if it says specifically "Health Department Grant."
Yep.
That's fine. The other thing is that, I'm, I'm not clear, and I, I'm having trouble with the revenue portion, or the sources portion, not the revenue portion, the sources portion for water, sewer, and stormwater, jiving with the expenses portion of water, sewer, and stormwater. And it may be me, because there's a portion of general revenue that goes toward the expenses of stormwater, correct?
That's correct.
And so theoretically, the sources of water, sewer, and stormwater should be lower than the expenses of those three, the sum of those three, by the amount of money transferred from our general fund.
So, if, I believe the, the budget worksheet that you've been provided should show the stormwater general fund subsidy of $552,000. I believe that should be included in there. Now, in terms of the sources, you are correct that the water, sewer, and stormwater reflects the entire piece of the revenues that the town would receive for '25. And the difference between the expense side of that would be the subsidy that is picked up for stormwater and the general fund.
Okay, well, I should go over this with you separately because I, I'm, I'm missing something, because when I did the addition, that $552,000, which I agree ought to be excess, I couldn't find it. But, but that's probably me, and it's, it's in there somewhere, so I just want to know. The final thing is the, a concern about revenue from the L-bond, okay? That $11 million that we borrowed, right? We've now put it in a CD or whatever, we've got it. And I thought that we said that that revenue would be, go into the water and sewer funds. But I don't see it here. And so, I just want to make sure that the revenue from the interest of that goes into the water and sewer, because we know that the principal and interest payments are definitely coming out of the, the water and sewer. And that's one of the reasons I spoke earlier about trying to get more of that money out of the water and sewer bond, because it's, it's just, you know, for people at home who don't know, the state does not allow us to invest that $11 million in an interest rate greater than what we're paying for the bond, even though we'd like to.
That would be arbitrage, which would not be allowed.
It's not allowed. And so therefore, we're, we're, it's caught, this borrowing this, unfortunately borrowing this additional money is costing us the spread between what we pay for and what we get as interest against the water and sewer, and it's unfortunate. So the more we can, or the sooner we can get that excess out of the water and sewer utilities, the sooner we can stop that excess money, because it's got to be paid for out of the, out of the enterprise fund. So, I'm just looking to see where that source of revenue is, and Ian, I don't need that answer now, but at some point.
I can get back to you on that.
It would be helpful, thank you.
Well, while we're on sources, I just had one question. Line item 116, it says investment income. And what is that from investments that we've made in terms of bank deposits?
So that's investments. Erica Brunel provides the Corley Investment Report, and this number is reflective of that activity. We historically have shown it on a very conservative basis because it is a free cash item for us. If, if actual receipts are greater than estimated receipts, then that is turned back as free cash. I wouldn't want to predict that FY '25 would have higher investment income because we don't know where interest rates will be. Therefore, I don't want to project too high, even though interest, investment income this year has been very favorable to us. But that represents bank deposits, CDs, and investments that we currently have.
Okay, and we get reports on those, or frequently, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions on? Well, certainly, there's a lot of work, you know, in going through this. I could tell that you really, you know, it was a great effort to try to keep the, keep the budget, you know, at a reasonable range and something we could feel comfortable approving. So what is the next step?
So it's, it's to some extent up to the Select Board now. In years past, you have had department budget hearings where you've brought some key departments in and asked questions about their FY '25 submission. In some years, you haven't, and you've, you've kind of deferred to the public hearing for the Finance Committee. It's really up to you. If there were some really big initiatives here or drastic changes, I would suggest holding those budget hearings, but this is a fairly miniscule budget, increase-wise.
You did a few departments in last year, right?
I believe so, usually it's the big ones. DPW, police, fire.
So we'd have to think about, is there, because, you know, it hasn't changed significantly from what we funded in the past because we haven't taken on many new initiatives. So, do we want to just, you know, see what the Finance Committee has to say, or do you want to invite in some department chairs, department heads?
I'll make, I'll make, I, I don't know that we need department heads if we've got Lynn and Ian to answer the questions, but I'd like to be able to go through the line item budget with Lynn and Ian at some point. I, you know, I've got half a dozen or more questions that I've got going through them, but I don't need the police chief or the Parks and Rec chief to sit here and justify what I'm sure Lynn can speak to.
Okay, well, Dan.
I was just, I mean, I, I agree with Mark. I, I thought it was helpful, certainly last year. This year, maybe not so much, but I think Lynn, if we could, like, just send, maybe send, I think last year we all gathered questions, right? And we sent them.
Yep.
I thought that would be helpful, at least personally, but maybe we, like, CC you on it and, and reach out to department heads if we have questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Josh?
Yeah, there, last year, there was a lot, things that jumped out at me that I thought would be helpful to hear from the department heads, but I think everyone else is right. I'm, I'm okay with, the questions are a good idea if any in particular, but a lot of people have their Monday nights.
All right, good.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I mean, this is a preservation project, and that jumps out, aside from getting clarification on a couple of things, or wanting to get budget heads' thoughts, maybe, or explanation, maybe just a couple of things, but I don't think it's worth calling people in.
All right.
Question time is, when do you want to go through that, then?
Through what?
Well, like I said, I, you know, do we, you want us to submit the questions in advance to Lynn and do it at the next meeting, or do you want to do it now? Do we want to just wing it at the next, I don't, you know, do we want to wait to the budget hearings, or, or maybe, there may be clarifications that will help at the budget hearings if we go through them now, I don't know.
Did you have the budget calendar up, Lynn?
I don't, but I could pull it up.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if you guys want to think about more questions and then have it discussed in another meeting, or if you feel you want to deal with some more line items now. I mean, I didn't have any more stuff to.
On the second page already.
Yeah, right. All right, so yeah, right now, we're at the presentation on the 18th, and tentatively, March 19th through the 28th is, you know, scheduled dates that the Finance Committee could potentially hold a budget hearing, and then it's really two-fold because they'd have to vote on warrant article recommendations around the same time period, because it's with a final goal to send off a draft warrant with budget insert and everything completed by, you know, the end of the week of April 1st. Pretty much where we're at right now.
I, I feel comfortable going through the line items if there's any particular questions on April 1st, but if you have something you think that you might need clarification on further questions, might as well do it now, right?
Yeah, do it now or send a question in advance of April 1st.
Okay, so we have two options, so, unless, Mark, you think there's things you should just, you just want to sit down with Lynn and Ian?
I mean, I, I'm more than happy to sit down with Lynn. The point, though, I think is, some of these need, ought to get public acknowledgement of what, you know, it doesn't do any good for the people in town for me to know, understand what's going on if they, they may have questions. That's the, that's, that's my concern, is if I've got questions, I presume maybe they do too.
All right, well, we could take a little more time tonight on this. I mean, we're going to go over the warrant, but it's kind of a bare bones thing, so if you want to ask all these questions now, would we do that for?
I don't want to, you know.
We could also consolidate all the questions that we receive. If you send them by email, we can consolidate them into one document and post it with the April 1st budget, or April 1st agenda, so that it does have that public viewing to it, and then we can certainly address them live at the meeting as well.
That's fine with me.
Okay, you guys agree?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good, that's our.
Tom, I, I just don't want to give people the impression that, you know, we're railroading through a budget here. I think people ought to know that there's a, Lynn scrutinized it, Ian scrutinized it, the Finance Committee scrutinized it, but more importantly, the Select Board has, that's all.
Okay, all right, good. So we'll move on to our next item, which is new business, and it's the annual town meeting warrant review. We have a first draft of the warrant to look at, and there's currently 30, 30 articles in the first draft. And as you can see, a lot of these are familiar items that we would have in terms of, you know, paying off last year's debt and appointing trustees and so forth. I don't know if there's, I guess first we'll start, is there any questions, any specific questions on articles, or do you want to go through them, just a quick review?
I think we ought to go through them. Personally, I think we ought to go through them. I mean, this is, the warrant is where we want to focus.
And I think last year, the way we did this was, at this meeting, we went through each article and, you know, made edits and, you know, pointed to places where maybe we needed to have, you know, additional information, and then, you know, we were kind of more prepared at the meeting to actually, the next meeting to actually vote on it, and go through it in a more efficient way.
All right, so the first article is to vote three trustees, and they have the names of, of folks there. So that's pretty standard, and then the second article is to transfer the sum of $760.91 to paying off prior bills from the year before. Pretty standard. Article three is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $110,000 or greater or lesser from available funds in the Treasury for the IT Department, purchase of new laptops, desktops and monitors, replace existing equipment that has reached the end of its life, they're about seven years old, or, you know, they want replaced on a five-year refresh cycle. Any questions on the?
Yeah, Tom, I, just because somebody called me today about this and said that the explanation ought to better describe why we won't be in the same pickle five years from now needing now needing to replace all the laptops, and I, because I understand it, I understand what it's saying, but I don't think it's as clear as other people might want it to be in terms of, we're gonna try to put it onto a, a staggered cycle so that we don't end up every, every five years coming up with a whole bunch of money. It also ought to clarify general government or schools or both for the, for the laptops, just because I think it's.
I think it says town departments.
It says town departments and the description.
But we can.
Why, yeah, those companies are two, because IT is in the town, or sorry.
It's a school.
It's a school, yeah. So this is just for the town.
Right.
And that's why.
School budget, uh, in school, do you implement, implement this plan to?
They lease Apple computers.
Okay.
And so that, that's the warrant article that's come to town meeting in the recent past to renew the, to enter into a new lease.
Uh, got you.
My only suggestion is, the computers used in the town departments, you always say, the town general government departments.
Sure.
Only because schools are town departments, too, and it's just, it's just a clarification.
Yeah, some town government retire, okay, that would make clearer. Anything else? Um, and then it, and then it, it talks about capital improvement plan contributions, uh, which would bring up to 183,000.
So the, um, the five-year refresh cycle, is it, and this is part of the IT plan, it's gonna be, it's gonna be budgeted, so the five-year cycle, rather than, like Mark said, having this, in five years, we're gonna budget two and 20,000, or the warrant article, there's gonna be 30,000 a year?
I'll need to talk to the IT director. I don't know what he's thinking about.
Yeah, well, we say there's a five-year refresh cycle, so.
Right, but I don't know how he's thinking.
Yeah, we should.
Or the way this reads is that one-fifth of the people are gonna get a new laptop a year ago, a year from now, and another fifth, two years from now, and another, when in fact, maybe it's, a fifth of them will get it five years from now, and a fifth will get it six years from now, you know, I, that's the, I, I don't know what the cycle is, but, and it frankly doesn't, I think that's micromanaging. I think the fact is that just people understanding that it's, there's a, there's a cycle is more important than, than getting the details of the cycle.
Yeah, I don't care how we do it, I just, so we're not, it's clear that we're not doing this every five years or over a year, even, so if we could clarify it somehow.
But, so it says a staggered schedule, so it would be, every, every time they did it, it would be about the same amount? Is that?
No. Goes up, I wouldn't, every laptop's gonna fuck.
It's a million bucks every five years.
I don't, I mean, they did it five years ago, right before I got here, the laptops were all purchased, so I don't know how it was done there, and I don't know how much they paid, but there hasn't been a consistent plan in place to turn over the town-side computers, um, and I know the new director is working on that and realized that there wasn't anything in place for these pieces of equipment that are already aging out. So the quickest way to fix it was the capital plan, but in order to fund it all, we, there's a combination of capital and free cash, uh, but I will send this to him, I will make sure that he gives us, um, the detail that we're looking for, for the explanation.
Okay. Well, again, it, it's, it's a really, I think the explanation's pretty good, it's just, you know, I guess it would make more sense for us to know what's gonna happen in five years and, so, staggered. So, Article 4, we'll continue discussion about the budget, and Article 5, the capital improvement plan, which we just approved earlier, um, this evening, and so then Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum, we don't have that, to fund wage settlement account, to cover the fire collective, fire department collective bargaining agreement, and non-school, non-union wage adjustments, and so that's something we discussed, uh, earlier in executive session, and the town manager's gonna move forward on pulling those together. Is there anything in the write-up that people think is?
So this is gonna change, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be changed from the next time it comes to you.
Okay.
They have recommended by finance, and they're twice money.
A lot of cutting and pasting that goes on.
Okay. And then, uh, so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, the sources of, the sources of these revenues may also be changing.
Yes.
Correct. From raise inappropriate to available funds and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yes. This is truly a rough draft, so we don't miss anything, but we're, as you can see, we're editing on the fly as well.
And earlier, we talked about maybe using the term competitive salary adjustments for some of these, is that?
In this case, that's not the applicable piece. This was truly to fund COLAs. Uh, we've, we've done them as separate warrant articles historically.
All right. So then, um, if, if there's no other questions on 6, we'll move to 7, and then this is , um, raise inappropriate funds, um, for the town's wage settlement account, purpose of funding non-union positions, cost of living, and take action to, on that, so, um, not much. And then the Article 8 would be the compensation classification implementation, which you've discussed in executive session. Article 9 would be to see if the town will vote to transfer $150,000, more or less, to water retained earnings, the count of, for the purpose of funding the water enterprising fund operating budget as adopted at the town annual meeting in 2024, um, and so.
Any chance that before we approve these, we can kind of take a look at what a, what a major water repair bill would be, you know, we, we always use the, get the, the road we had, but it's, you know, Richard Foster, if not just.
Captain.
Captain Road just blew apart, and it was like a five-day repair kind of thing, and.
Oh, it's easy. We just added Magnolia Circle.
Okay, well.
We can just dust that off and.
Fine, but that, that's kind of a, two of those in a year is a worst-case scenario, and we ought to, we ought to make sure we can cover those.
It's like our every-year scenario.
Well, then, it's an every-year scenario, whatever it is.
They showed us a, like, a fairly minor repair of 75 grand, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's expensive.
Right, but we have $500,000, so you handle a lot of 75,000 repairs. The problem is, some of these big ones are like 300,000, not 70,000.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like, 75 is one day, it's five days, yeah.
Yeah, and there's also, not to get into too much detail here, but there's a, a, a changing way on how this is handled, and before repaving the road, as part of it, was not covered under the enterprise fund. It really should be. The water main blew apart, part of fixing the road is actually fixing the road.
As I said, let, let's figure out.
Yeah.
What the appropriate amount is in this retained earnings funds, that's all.
And, but in the last sentence, uh, it says the offset of 150,000 for, for the water rate of $4 and something per cubic feet, uh, on an increase of 7.3, but really, what we're doing is, we're saying, we're using this money to reduce, um, from like a 13.3 increase, somehow, I'd like to see the word reduction in there somewhere. Does that make sense?
Tom, if I may, that doesn't, um, because we haven't set the rates yet.
Yeah.
There could be a potential that those rates would be higher than even what we have here, so that's, that's the risk we could run with.
So why are we even putting that in here?
Well, I, I figured this would be a good discussion for that particular point, Mark.
I, I think we ought to just say simply, the, the intent is to moderate the, the water rate increase, cause, and leave it at that, cause we don't, $150,000 is, is gonna moderate the increase, but I don't know if it's gonna be 10 cents or 1 cent.
Right.
I think we should also just say, like, what it says the proposed water rate was, um, that's fine, but then down below where the, with the offset, the water rate is, I think, put would be.
No, but, but I, but I don't think we should put anything.
I agree.
What the rate would be at all?
Yeah.
Well, just say this would, the intention is to moderate the increase.
Yeah, the intent of using retained earnings is to moderate the increase.
But it is, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you haven't even set the rate, you don't need to know.
We don't, we don't, we don't set the rate, we haven't even established anything.
But we are, but if it goes, if it works out like this, we would be reducing what taxpayers pay.
What water, what, what water rate users pay.
Water rate users would be reduced.
Not necessarily taxpayers, water rate.
Right, but water, water users would be reduced.
By $150,000.
Well, so it's.
It moderates the rate.
Well, the difference between 13 and, you know, we're reducing it by 7%.
No, you, you don't know that. You don't know that you're reducing it by 7%.
Well, that's the goal of this, though, right?
No, the re, the goal is to reduce it by, the overall cost of, of, the, the goal is to reduce the amount of money we need to raise through water fees by $150,000. That's the only goal of this.
Right.
As a, as an additional caveat, um, there are proposed articles that would further reduce the water retained earnings account as proposed items, so this runs into the discussion I was alluding to earlier, where we would be not in violation, but we would be, um, underneath what the minimum retained earnings policy is for the water and potentially the sewer retained earnings account if we went forward with these articles.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's find out what we need to do, you know? It could be, instead of $150,000, it's 100, but I'm not even sure why we need these articles. In the past, we voted to transfer money from retained earnings into the account as part of setting the rates.
I included these articles myself because I figured it would be a good discussion piece. There's certainly no need for us to.
Discussion had, but we don't, but we don't need these articles.
That was my other question. We already voted as the commissioners.
Where the water, sure, the commissioners said it, yeah.
Where the commissioners.
I, I apologize.
No, 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 don't apologize.
Explanation.
No, but I, I think we just delete these and say, at the time we set the water rates and sewer rates, we find out how much money is available to, to transfer, if there, if there is any.
Ian, this is your first budget season, this is no excuse.
I understand, I understand, Josh, thank you.
Yeah, we never make any mistakes.
We have made mistakes in years, so, so Article 9 and 10, we won't have to worry about those.
Keep going, keep cutting.
Yeah. That's good.
I'm just not gonna, I'm just gonna suggest edits for now.
I'm a little tired from race this weekend.
In the case we need the language in the future.
How many did you add?
Well, we tried to make government more efficient, and this is our, our way, we just, we decided.
We have a four-hour meeting.
Yeah, we'll redo it. So, uh, Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate 175,000 plus, uh, purpose of paying the district improving, uh, just, just, DIF, the district improvement financing debt service, um, relative to the statute, so, as you know, we, well, they built, at the end of, uh, Converse and Dwight, they built the medical building there, um, we took out, uh, money to help with the, the, for the roads and, and bring those up to date and improve the district, and so, the, they send us money every year, and we use that to pay off.
This is the same language we always use?
Yep.
Yep.
So, this is a good thing for us.
It could be obligated to do it.
So it's, it probably doesn't say that we get the money from, well, it's just, whatever, so we're good. They send, they increase their money to the general fund. Okay. Number 12, um, to see if we'll transfer funds to this, um, to, of, to the operating budget for legal expenses, um, pretty straightforward, the legal matter going on, um, and I, so, you know, it talks about the, please, it doesn't talk about the, the legal matter in terms of the, oh, there it is, site, site mediation, and should it say, um, because there was a, a concern about eminent domain, I mean, should it, because we've combined those two cases, should it say both eminent domain and remediation?
I can add that in if you want. I mean, the case was consolidated, but I can add that in.
Yeah, because it's consolidated, just so you know, it's, it's a consolidation of, that it's still not resolved, although we paid a fair price. Any other questions on, comments on 12?
Um, I, yeah, so, it's an additional, so we already have some.
Yes.
Our budget, yes, or, but, on the gap.
There's 43,000 reserved for this right now, left, remaining. Uh, the reason I have a, a blank here is because we are estimating out the rest of FY24's legal budget, and we believe we're gonna have some savings that we want to be able to put towards this, and so I don't think we're gonna need the full amount that the attorneys have quoted me for going to trial.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm waiting to get that number.
I'm just, I'm thinking back to our pipeline.
Yep.
Vote. Have we, I know for the pipeline, we know when it's gonna end, unless we appeal, is there, have we been told, and also as a lawyer, I know that, who the hell knows what's gonna happen, but have they said, yeah, this is, this'll get us through a trial and that's it?
That's all they've, yeah, that's all they said.
Good lawyer.
Good to be Jackie.
Okay, sounds good. So Article 13, then, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury, $20,000.
Did we, did we promise that we re, re?
Yes.
We did?
Well, as much as I can promise.
We're gonna put this in in May, and then July, it's gonna come back to us as.
Free cash.
As free cash.
Yep.
I mean, because they're not gonna spend it. It's just a waste of five minutes here and 10 minutes on town meeting floor.
Okay, so it was gonna replenish the funding account for the.
I think it's nuts.
Repair to the fire department ambulance.
But we did promise them that we'd replenish it.
And so, 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 Mark, you're saying, we probably, if.
I mean, if we promised the fin, the finance committee, we replenished the 20 grand, we ought to do it, but the fact is, we're gonna replenish it, they're gonna end the year with $50,000 now unused, and that's gonna come back as free cash, so it's just like transferring this money into free cash, but the fact is, if we made the promise, just do it.
I made the promise that I would put the warrant article forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Didn't, oh, did, how about that weed?
Well, I mean, no, I can't promise things for you guys.
I just, I just think it's a, it's, it's ridiculous to do this.
It, it was very helpful in this situation that we needed it with the ambulance repair.
I understand it. They, they guard their $50,000 and never use it, so.
All right.
It's not worth fighting over.
And then Article 14, we'll see if we'll appropriate, um, we've got 1,648,649 to pay costs of the List Park Playground Project, so-called, for the purpose of reviving public playgrounds, including the payment of all costs incidental and related to, should be undertaken in coordination, reimbursement land, of, of a reimbursement grant from the Land and Water Conservation Grant Program, and so, um, so this is, we're, and we have to wait and see if we get this grant, right? Is that?
Yes.
And how much is this grant we're trying to get?
Fifty, it covers 50%.
Okay.
Okay.
So unless we get half of this paid, half of 1.65 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we tell voters it, it could cover up to 50% or close to 50% in the explanation?
Yeah, I thought it was in here.
Is the wording, is the wording of this statutorily required?
Yes.
So we have to authorize the whole amount?
Yes.
Even though they're.
It's a reimbursement.
They're paying only 50%. They'll reimburse us 50%.
Yep.
The, the question is, can we make this payment contingent upon receiving the grant? Cause that's gonna come up at town meeting, you know? Fine, I'll pay 824,000, but, and I'll, and I'll approve this based on, we're, our net payment's gonna be 824, but I don't know if I want to pay the whole 1.65 million.
So I think, let me talk with Corinne when she's back in the office. I think we can firm up the explanation to say that if, we will not go out to borrow until we receive confirmation of the grant.
Okay.
Um, because if we don't get the grant, I don't know that we're willing to, I don't, I don't believe this rises to the priority.
Well, it says, no amounts will be borrowed or expended hereunder until the select board has determined that the town has received a grant commitment for this project, so it already says no down there, the fourth line from the bottom.
Sorry, I was looking at the last sentence.
The, the issue is, nowhere does it say that, you know, a grant will cover 50% of this.
Yep.
Yeah, so that'd be, if we could put that in, that it, um, expectation says the grant would cover 50% of this cost.
Yep.
That'll make it easier for the voters. Any other comments?
The beginning of the explanation is just. The beginning of the explanation is just, I know you're probably still switching the mic, but it's written like a motion. So I could just, just say, explain what we're trying to do here.
And is it worth putting in the explanation why we wanna do this?
Yeah.
Go ahead, check it out.
You know, like, why now?
Yeah.
Because it's all, because usually, because they, it should mention ADA compliance and, right, is that some of those?
It'll, that and the active rec study and the age of the playground and not buying in components for it, absolutely, yeah.
So.
Actually, this part probably.
This problem with all these old playgrounds, right? You can't, at which certain point, you can't get the parts anymore.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have some of that stuff.
I think it's the same language that right there is in the article.
And then we'll move to Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars for Community Preservation Local Surcharge and Trust Fund for administrative costs for the Community Preservation Committee. So, they incur costs and we want to cover that.
So, Article fifteen through nineteen are all CPA approved.
Yeah.
But, but fifteen implies that, and maybe it's me, but raise and appropriate, this is coming out of the community preservation funds. And it doesn't say that in, in the explanation. It said, you know, these, this is being paid out of the community preservation funds that are raised as a supplement to, to tax revenue.
I have to check the language. This was language that gets submitted to us by the committee and I believe it's consistent with years past, but I can look into that.
It's like sixteen, seventeen. Transfer, raise appropriate?
Well, it says it raises and appropriates from the Community Preservation Local Surcharge and Trust Fund.
And trust.
This, that, this is just to fund their admin person. It's not an application. It's, nobody, it's not funding a grant. So, I believe it's, it's how they have to fund their admin staff.
Okay, so we can look and see if there's any discrepancy on that. Because then the next one just says the town will fund Article sixteen.
It's the same, yeah.
The Stores, House, Museum, Collections, Preservation, Application, Amount of seven thousand and change for the, so we take act, so this, enable the Historical Society to improve the Stores, House, Museum, Environment, Preservation of Archives, Collection of Objects, Replacing Aging Basement Humidity Control System by purchasing additional environment monitor, environmental monitors and archive storage materials. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions on that or comments? Okay, and then seventeen. Again, the town will vote to fund the Preservation of Historical Land Use Records Application, the amount of sixty thousand dollars and change to, from the Community Preservation Historic Fund and take action. So, the goal of this project is to preserve historic land use records, decisions currently reside in Town Hall Archives.
In town, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we've been told we don't get any say in.
We don't have to say.
We don't get, we've been, my hands have been slapped, I know, I don't know about anybody else's.
Well, okay.
We're trying to change it.
No, just in terms of if there's anything missing in terms of explaining it, but it looks like they're all pretty clear.
That's their doing.
So, we can just move those quickly and if people see something they wanna address it, we could talk about it in a future meeting. And then, come, money for the Council of Aging.
So, twenty is a standard article that has to come forward to every annual town meeting.
Right.
Article twenty.
Yeah, so the, you know, the Council of Aging Revolving Fund, no, this is.
Is that the fund we recently, increased recently?
Yes, we created it and then increased it twice.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's good that they've got too much money coming in, as long as you spend it.
It has to be, the fund has to be established at every town meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
Twenty-one's yours, Venee, your committees?
Yeah, municipal light plant, so, we are moving forward, I think next, at our next meeting, we're gonna take a vote on which option to go with for fiber, to bring fiber to Long Meadow. We have so far rejected the options that would not require municipal light plant. So, that's just another way to say that all the options left before us would require the creation of a municipal light plant. And so, this is, you know, I think, as, as is explained here, it's just the first vote of two that's needed to establish it. And then, kind of depending on where we are with, you know, agreements with potential partners in this, you know, they will be either present at town meeting or beforehand to help answer questions, to talk about this more, whether, you know, at the May meeting or, you know, more likely at the fall meeting.
So, I was just gonna say, so, this is the first of two necessary votes. Do you anticipate the second one also being at this town meeting?
Oh, no, no, the second one will be at the fall town meeting, if it.
So, why even have them there? Just gonna add confusion to the town meeting? Why, why even have outside organizations to answer questions about a municipal light plant and what our plans are when we haven't even decided yet?
Well, no, I'm saying, in, in case we do get there before May, unlikely that we do. More likely the bill here in the fall, in the fall.
Does this in itself do anything?
No.
We don't, we're not bound to anything, doesn't, doesn't cost us anything, we're just.
Yeah, so kind of similar to the municipal aggregation.
This is moving very fast for a town thing, right?
Okay, so twenty-one will move us one step further in that process towards fiber optics. Twenty-two, see if the town will rescind the vote for Article fourteen, establish the opioid stabilization fund.
Why?
So, so speaking of not moving fast, the state promised that they were going to put forward regulations that allowed cities and towns to adopt special revenue funds to hold the opioid money.
Yeah.
And they dragged their feet with it for a very long time and finally, after most communities had put the money in these operating, or into these stabilization funds, the state now has authorized special revenue accounts to be able to use the fund. So, we want to transfer the money out of the stabilization fund and into the special revenue account and then dissolve the stabilization fund.
What's the benefit of a special revenue account versus a stabilization fund? Just how you move money in and out of it?
And you don't need town meeting.
Right, right, stabilization fund requires a town meeting.
Correct, you have to have it appropriated.
Yeah, okay, and so, we're really just following what the state is telling us to do anyways, so. Okay, so Article twenty-two and then twenty-three.
Do we, we change the number of people that could apply for this, but we don't have, that's, doesn't need to be in here? This is just above the limit?
Yeah, so, they amended the state law and it was brought to my attention that we need to adopt the amendment in order to effectuate it.
So, we've already increased our limit and the amount of people, but we have to do this.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the senior work-off abatement program to help people decrease what they pay for their taxes if they do, you know, work for the town and so, it would just change the, increase the abatement amount from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars in the select board, we've already discussed this. So, not as a big surprise. And then, we start the zoning bylaw changes. And so, we're looking at adopting some various things in regard to sign regulations and so they have added and deleted things. They're trying to reduce redundancy.
I believe there's a memo attached to the agenda from Corinne on this topic.
For the next article, for twenty-five.
Okay.
No, don't take it.
We, we can't do anything about zoning or planning board files anyway, right?
Well, if there's something that isn't, doesn't seem correct, I mean, we can make comments now.
So, twenty-four, you, you referred to the planning board already for their review. They're gonna have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
Not to jump ahead, but Article twenty-five, the memo that Corinne put forward, that actually needs a vote to be referred to the planning board for a public hearing. That didn't come to your previous meeting where twenty-four was referred, so when you do get to Article twenty-five, somebody just needs to make a motion to refer it to the planning board. And that's consistent with just how we've handled zoning petition changes.
Okay, so the.
First state law.
We look at signs and, the only thing that was in these, in the discussion here was when they talk about signs, like political signs, they, they really didn't take into much account of like, if there's a write-in candidate. And they write in candidate, because they said that they, the person, the sign has to be the name of a person whose name is on the ballot. But if you had a write-in candidate, their name wouldn't be on the ballot and they should have access to be able to put up signs just like any other candidate. So, you know, I think that's the only thing I, I would question, you know, is that something that was overlooked or they just don't like write-ins or?
I'm not following. I don't know where, I'm not sure it mentions anything that says that's not allowed in this.
Yeah, it's two four one, two four two one, A, B, no, B. Where are you going? Temporary signs relating to candidates for office shall be limited to candidates for town offices or candidates for other offices whose names will appear on a ballot for an election within the town. It's.
Where are you guys seeing this?
Page, the top of page nine of the warrant.
Are we on Article twenty-six? Oh.
Yeah.
Oops, we're, yeah, we're.
That's page nine, temporary signs permit.
Okay, I was looking at Article twenty-four, sorry.
Well, I was looking at twenty-six.
So, limiting, you know.
So, we just skipped over the vote on twenty-five to refer it?
Yeah, sorry.
But, so I don't know why you would, you know, I can see, you can, you should limit to candidates or write-in candidates. I.
This is.
That's on twenty-six, so we're still on twenty-four.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, but the other ones are, I mean, do we have anything to comment? So, you want it? Twenty-four, we have to refer?
Twenty-four is all set. You did that at a previous meeting. Twenty-five.
I'll make a motion when we refer Article twenty-five to the planning board.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay, on twenty-four and twenty-five, any of the planning board ones, I don't remember. Do they add on the explanation?
Yes, they have to go in and add the explanation. They have to hold their public hearing. Not necessarily do they have to wait until the public hearing to add the explanation.
Okay.
Corinne will be working on the explanation in our office this week.
Okay.
And then I could, I could definitely put those questions forward to her.
Yeah, yeah.
This is all language that's already in the bylaw. This is not adding additional language. The strikeouts are just taking out the language, so if you were looking to add that additional language, that would have to be obviously an amendment to the bylaw, is what I'm understanding, I think you're saying.
Yeah, well, we're changing the bylaw now, so if we changed it, we would, could say, you know, write-in candidates would be allowed to have signs posted, you know, temporary signs related to candidates. I mean, I don't know, do you guys have any opinion on write-ins?
I think you're right, Tom.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I think you are, but I don't, can we change a zoning bylaw?
That is part of the process. The planning board has, the way I understand it, the planning board has a public hearing and when it gets implemented into the ward, into the warrant, they're voting on a recommendation for that article. But I don't see why that recommendation couldn't be brought to them to review.
Yeah, I just don't know if we can, if we can do it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I, I honestly don't know.
So, we can't vote on it and change it, but we can make a request, right?
Well, yeah, I wonder if we have to tell, we have to ask the planning board to review your idea.
Yeah, sounds like that would be all we can do.
I think that's, from what I know, that's probably the right way to do it.
I know they haven't had the hearing on this yet, so if you would like, we could, we could talk with Corinne about that recommendation and, you know, she could put a memo forward to them.
All right, yeah, I mean, there aren't that many write-ins, but, you know, the way, I, I can only imagine what the next set of elections are gonna be like.
There was a write-in candidate that got elected to school committee last year.
Oh, okay, oh, that's, okay.
So, her signs were all.
Is she inside? Well, there we go.
But I, I think, I don't think we need to refer, you can just tell Corinne.
Yeah.
As part of the public hearing process.
And then, we move to Article twenty-seven, right? And this is the, well, looking at discharge for storm drains and illicit connections to the town and trying to eliminate those. And this is pretty standard, we, would have anything to say about that?
So, you, this one was already approved when, at one point. It got kicked back or called out by the Attorney General's Office because if you look at D, the sentence didn't make sense.
They didn't like that, okay.
So, we are proposing to, the, the strikeout there is what we wanna remove.
Okay, good, all right. And then we go into citizen position, petitions. Article twenty-eight is to look at a feasibility report studying for, to determine the viability of a grass field versus artificial turf and to renovate the Long Meadow Stadium based on that, yep.
So, this doesn't, this reminds me of the Emerson Street, I think the crosswalks, there's no funding in here. So, what is it, if this gets voted, if this gets approved, what happens?
I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna stand up and volunteer to do the study for, for nothing and they're gonna get what they pay for. And theoretically, that, that meets the requirement.
There'd need to be a motion to amend from the floor of the meeting to add a funding source and an amount.
Okay, okay. Do we have any idea, I'm sorry, is there, do we have any idea on an amount? Has that information been given?
Yeah, we, we actually ran this language through our beta engineer, beta engineering firm. While it's a citizen petition, DPW and I both felt like this has a lot of value for us to, to see what the study might say. So, we just asked them what it would cost. They gave us a quote of sixty-six thousand. We're gonna run it by a couple other places to see if we could get a better price. And so, I, I would be happy to work with the petitioner to figure out how we could pay for this because we do see a lot of value in doing this study.
At the Parks and Rec presentation, I thought that this was really interesting. There's a lot of good ideas with this. It's great long-term for the town.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, just looking for the.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate this. I just think sixty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money, but somebody's gotta, I mean, if, because if it's, for example, raise and appropriate, blows the rest, everything we've done before that, in terms of the budget out of, you know, apart, right? You know.
Or there's no money left to, if it was out of the funds available in the treasury.
Right.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at that. I mean, because we, we, again, we see a lot of value in this study being done, so what we can do to try to help get that done, we will. I, I think you're right, sixty-six is a lot, so that's why we were gonna send this around to a few other firms.
Okay.
Or Mark can do it for free.
Yeah.
Travel to Harfist or Terrence, all over the country, could go and do that. So, Article twenty-nine is really looking at a zoning change, right? Is a petition to change zoning regarding to solar panels, zone setbacks?
The ground, ground mounted solar panels.
Is it, this was two years, right? Three, it had to be three, did it have to be three years?
It had to be two, but it has been three.
And Article thirty is also on solar panels, zone setbacks, and so.
The planning board will also hold public hearings on these as well.
So, so again, if this was approved by the town, then it just basically tells the zoning board that they have to approve this?
It amends our bylaws. It amends our bylaws.
Amends the bylaws, okay.
The problem is, it's not in the format that appropriately fits into our bylaws. And so I think after, if, if this were to be approved, it'd then have to be approved by the attorney general's office, and then somebody have to figure out how to, where and how to put it into our bylaws. Right?
Yes.
It's not part of the, it's not in the format of general code or-
Yep.
How it would go in there or any of that stuff.
So should it, the first sentence, I mean, I know it's just a suggestion, it's a citizen's position, but should it say, to see if the town will change it, vote to change the bylaw?
We can't, we can't change the, what it says.
No, but, you know, it would make me clearer.
You can't.
Is that our typo or there is, or cursed typo, to vote to allow? It says vote to all.
I'll check, I'll, I'll, I'll check, let me see the next article to see if. It's, it might be, I might have copied and pasted after vote to, so yeah, I think that's probably my typo.
I think you must take it off PDF, so there's some weird formatting, like the, the one, zero, ten feet under A. There's a, um, it seems like the spacing, there's a couple places where that might have happened.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at this, this was directly copied off the PDF, so yeah, I'll have to look in and make sure that it's-
I spend like an hour a day doing stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Thirty warrant, our, so do we anticipate additional warrant? Thirty is pretty short annual town meeting.
Very short. Well, we've already taken out two, so.
Right.
We're getting shorter, but we'll see what shows up.
I, I don't, I'm not aware of others that are coming in.
Mm-hmm. All right, good. All right, so then-
Oh, sorry, I spoke too soon. There will be one for the revolving fund for the banner, um, banner sponsorship.
Who already did that?
Uh, we have to authorize a, there's something we have to do with it, maybe I'm misremembering.
Revolving funds have to be authorized every year.
Lynn, I'm also thinking, um, for the bond, the general obligation bond proceeds, is there a article required to approve the use of those funds to reduce the retained earnings? Is that a required article?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
The, the other thing that we don't have in here, which you seem to have every year, something to do with vending machines in the schools.
We haven't done that in years. We, uh, so the Municipal Modernization Act, you don't have to authorize the revolving funds annually, you have to set the budget for it.
Okay.
And, um, that could be, I gotta go check on that banner, banner sponsorship one.
Okay. Also, based on the motion earlier for the capital plan, do we need an additional article to reappropriate those funds now?
I'd have to check.
Yeah.
Or, do we wanna, do we need to wait to unappropriate till we know what happens with that? Till the contract's finalized?
We oughta do that.
Well, yeah, because it could be four, it could be two.
Or it could be eleven.
Sorry, say that again?
We can't unappropriate the water, uh, the-
The whole project.
Oh, right, no, we can't do anything with that.
Until we know how much it actually is.
Right.
I can confirm with our financial advisor what the rules are for unappropriating that. Because I'm not sure.
We also check with the AGs or somebody, because it, we, I know we've done it in the past, mostly with projects, the other, the other thing is, what call I got today is, is there's capital left over from the, from the adult center? And is that also bond money that's available to unappropriate from the adults? You know, or is there still, are there still expenses coming in that we want to charge against that? I don't know.
Yes and no.
Any, any bonds, any bond items that have been, or any projects that have been completed that still have bonds allo, um, allocated towards them can be used for other projects of the same length or shorter for those amounts. So we can repurpose those funds as long as they're for another bond purpose, is my understanding.
Right, but, but, but we have to vote, like I said, like before, to reappropriate the money.
Yes, sorry, I was just explaining the mechanics of it.
We, we can use the, the money, and we've got the money. It's just a matter of how, but we have to, because I know we've had votes in the past that said we're, we're closing out such and such a bond with X amount of money left in it, and we're putting that money somewhere else. But that may be something we want to look at also.
Okay, so that could show up, possibly?
Yep.
Okay, and, um, other than that, we can, you know, first review? We don't have to go open and close or do anything, it's just, that's it. Okay, so we can move on to our next agenda item, which is to vote to adopt the new compensation classification scale. We discussed this thoroughly in executive session prior to this to figure out how we're going to fund this. Do we have a motion?
I'll move we adopt the compensation and wage scale as presented by town manager?
Second.
Okay, all right. All those, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I have a little, little bit of further discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we're, this is going to pay people more in town. And I know that, we just saw budget problems that we have. We have a tight budget every year. I, I just want people to keep in mind that I think keeping, we have salaries artificially low, and I think that that is an artificial help in that budget. I, I think in the end, we gotta make sure we have good people in town. We have to hire good people, make us, this an attractive place to work, so we get the best workers so they can do what our town residents want and expect. And if we, um, if we don't pay people, we, we won't, we won't get that. We'll lose people, train people who leave. So this is better for us long-term. So I, I hope people are happy with their pay increases and they're getting paid with their work.
Okay.
Yeah, the other, completely agree with Josh. The other thought is to, um, we, we look at some of the, you know, what DPW is doing with outsourcing. So hopefully this will help, you know, minimize some of the outsourcing, saving the town funds, especially when we look at overtime as well, so, well said, Josh.
Good, yeah. So hopefully we'll have some happy workers and we'll just, um, all right, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Okay, all right, so this will start to happen. And now we have seasonal liquor license renewals, Franconia Golf Course. The Clubhouse Cafe renewal is asking for a renewal for their, um, golf course there.
Are they up to date with all their payments?
Yeah, I was just about to say, everything's up to date, all, um, general billing and taxes are up to date. And pretty standard license application.
I'll move we re, we renew the seasonal liquor license for Franconia Golf Course.
Second. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, then we have application for a one-day liquor license by Oksana Salon and Spa. They do a fundraiser for autism, doesn't say it on here, but it says it on there. So the event will be on April twenty-first, from twelve to four PM at their location at two oh seven Bliss Road. Do we have a motion to accept this application?
I'll move we accept the, uh, April twenty-first, one-day liquor license application from Oksana Salon and Spa.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and then we have some correspondence. I don't know if anyone has any comments on the- No, hearing none. We will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, unanimous? Okay, thank you very much, have a good evening.